Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Bob Thompson, Pastor Corinth Reform Church.
Oh God, we watch the news and we are so aware of the level of unrest and violence and hatred in the world far away and even as close as Ferguson, Missouri. And we're grateful to live in Hickory, North Carolina. And it's not that such things can't happen here, but we're so thankful for our city council, for our law enforcement, for our city government employees, and for the blessings of living in this place. And we pray that you would continue to give all who lead and govern and watch over us wisdom and humility and a spirit of service that we may continue to live our lives peacefully in all godliness and holiness to the glory of your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with a special presentation by Mr. Alan Barnhart, Executive Director of the Cataba Science Center.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I appreciate you letting me be here today and enjoyed the invocation because we're really, what I want to do is to talk a little bit about one of those treasures that we have in the community here and what we're doing to help this community. I refer to the slides and I've been told that I've got to move fast, so I'm going to go through some of these things pretty quickly. If you've got questions, you can ask later. But as you can see, just from the comment up here, Cataba Science Center, hopefully everybody knows about Cataba Science Center, right here on the salt block in Hickory. It is a very unique organization. And we're going to talk a little bit about that before I get into information on the exhibit that we've got. So how are we, this jewel in, or I should say maybe one of the jewels in Hickory's crown? I can tell you a lot of different examples of where our Economic Development Corporation and the city had brought people through that are looking to relocate to Hickory. We've got prospective businesses coming through all the time. And you can come through on any given day and hear lots of different individuals talking in foreign tongues. And I'm not talking about, you know, strange tongues, but people coming in from France or Germany or Australia or wherever it may be, they are attracted to this community. And the residents in this community bring them by the salt block in Cataba Science Center because it's a really great place to be. And so I just use that as one example. There are lots of ways that we benefit the larger community. This chart really should say, not visitors, but it should say school groups. Because Cataba Science Center in the last year served over 53,000 children from 24 different counties that are mostly in the foothills. We have the one over there in Forsyth County, I guess they decided they didn't have enough good science programs over there and they came to us. But the point really here is that Cataba Science Center has incredible hands-on science education programs. They attract children and teachers from all over, especially the foothills and western part of the state. And we're happy to have them come here or to go to them for programs. So trying to figure out how unique is Cataba Science Center? We did a study and conducted some research, Dr. Tom Lesser led this, to say, in similar populations, how many populations like ours have a science center? And so these were some of the populations that we were looking at that were similar. You can see Hickory, Lenore Morgington is down there on the bottom. The population size is about 360,000. And then we asked the question, how many of them have a science center? And you can see the list gets pretty narrow very quickly to how many communities our size have invested in a science center and we're one of those few. And then we looked at what are some of the other things? And it turned out that wow, some of these get a lot of government support and that's how they stay in business. You'll note that Cataba Science Center really was founded in a different way. It was off of the people in this community that really believed that a science center was important to the education of their children and to the community at large. And so our model is based on really on earned income and on contributed income, not so much from government sources. If we start looking at Cataba Science Center a little bit different way and say, what's the household income? Well, there you go, there's some information. Unfortunately, our income in our household income in this area is less than some of these, but still the people in the community are investing, they're contributing and they're philanthropic gifts to Cataba Science Center. We just take that as an indication that in fact, people believe in what's happening. And then we looked at the number of people that are served and that goes back to that slide that was showing 130,000 people came to Cataba Science Center last year involved in programs. And if we extrapolate that out to the population and you use that same percentage in these other groups. Percentage served, I think is probably not the correct title for that, but the important part is people are really using Cataba Science Center as a way to educate their children, whether it's homeschool, whether it's public schools, private schools, or just individuals in the community. It's a great resource for this community. And so I want to spend the rest of the time just talking about one exhibit because people think of us as being a science education center. And we're actually much more than that. We are a factor in pushing the economy and trying to introduce children and their families to science and into jobs in this community. And the Furniture Well Crafted exhibit, which we are, have on display right now and through about the middle of November is a great example. So we've got a little video clip, if you can run to that, that gives you a feeling for what this exhibit is about. So I do want to thank our sponsors for the exhibit. Actually, HSM Solutions is our lead sponsor followed by Von Drell and Vanguard. And then we have lots of engagement from other groups. So what are we trying to do in this exhibit? You saw lots of pictures real quickly on the interaction of kids and family members. We're about promoting skill sets and different types of things that are used in the furniture industry, but there's also a lot of social interaction going on. So we're about building relationships with those families as well. These were our objectives as we were looking at the exhibit. And while you're reading those, I'll just share with you that as I was out touring factories and I'm always looking for science and innovation that we can then take back to the public and share with them. It's really important for us to look for connections to our local industries. So we're trying to do that in a very concerted way by doing tours, figuring out how can we relate the science to hands-on activities. It's challenging in some cases, but I think we've done a great job with the furniture exhibit. So how do we connect people then to those jobs and to other parts of the community? In the exhibit that we've got, you will find that, and these are some of our partners, you will see all kinds of things like we're in those pictures. We started off and said, wow, we need to really promote furniture. I was hearing a lot of talk about people's misconceptions about the furniture industry. It's a bad place to work, it doesn't pay well, lots of different things of that nature. And I learned very quickly that that's not the case anymore. There are really good jobs out there. And so we created a section that was about the past, just to address those issues that people were having. And then to move them on to understanding that there are really cool jobs through the creation of activities. So we worked with different people, one of the first ones with Charlie Zagoroli, and to say, how do we do the design element? And so we worked with him and then realized, oh, we've got to put in more technologically-oriented stuff with CAD design and CNC. So we went to Micro D, another local company. All of this partnership was with local regional companies. We did not go outside of the area and that was by intent. We're really trying to promote jobs in this community, connections to these businesses that are off on side roads, people don't know about them. So let's leverage what we have at Cataba Science Center with a lot of traffic to create some awareness. We've worked very closely with the Furniture Academy at CVCC because they've got an incredible vocational training program, as well as CCC and TI up in Caldwell County. Again, this is a regional thing. So we are trying to move people to those jobs. And it was really nice to hear shortly after we opened up that the Furniture Academy called and said, hey, we got our first person that wants to sign up. They just came from the exhibit. So, you know, it's working. We need to look for ways to promote that. We're partnering now to, for an extension on Furniture Well Crafted, the exhibition, to create a chair design competition. David Zagoroli, we've asked with his expertise in that field to be one of our leaders in the competition and to help us put together the rules for that. The idea is we want to invite as many people as possible to submit a chair design. It could be a current design, it could be something futuristic, whatever they want to submit, so that we can take all those designs and then put them out in the community in high-traffic areas. Fanjoy and LaBrenns have already offered to go into those businesses, take pictures of the people, big smiley faces. We want to talk about the connections to the businesses in this area and then get those out into banks and other high-traffic locations. Brad, I think you've already offered your hotels. BB has offered the convention center as sites. We're looking for more. We need help in promoting that. This is all about what we can do to promote jobs in this community. That's all I really have to say. Thank you very much. Come and see us. There are free passes. Anybody that wants a free pass to Cataba Science Center, they're in the lobby out here. There are brochures and little flyers on our current exhibit, Furniture Well Crafted. And Charlie, David, I left some information on the competition out there. There's some limited pieces. So hopefully we can talk about that or BB or Mandy can talk to those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. BB Leach, CEO of the Hickory Metro Convention Center. And her sidekick?
Well, I'm not BB, but I'm going to be here with BB and Mr. Mayor, a member of City Council. Appreciate the time, letting us be here for just a moment. We're going to sort of follow in Alan's footsteps. We do not have the pretty pictures and all that stuff because I won't let BB spend the money on that type of stuff. But we do do meetings well crafted, okay? So that's what we're here to tell you about is meetings well crafted and tourism and development here in the greater Hickory metro. And I just wanted to say that she's made a presentation to the Conover City Council. And we're just thankful for the City of Hickory, for their support. You do not give us any dollars, we don't ask for any dollars. Conover doesn't give any dollars, we don't ask them for any dollars. But this is something now. And Ms. Leach has been very nervous. Her budget this year has gone over $2 million. And that is all from occupancy tax revenues, there's no abnormal tax dollars, and from the event revenue that she raises there at the convention and convention center and the CBD. So again, I'm here just to say thank you for your support. And if there's anything we can do to help you have your meetings, we will do them as well-craftedly as we can.
So in following up with Mr. Eckert, who is the Chairman of the Tourism Development Authority, this resolution is to the City Council and Mayor Wright. I don't know if you'd like to come up here and stand up here or I'll bring it to you when I finish reading it. It's rather lengthy, but I think it's well worth reading it. This is a great tribute to City Council. Whereas Senate Bill 896 was enacted by the General Assembly of North Carolina during the 1985 session and ratified as the 1985 Session Law's Chapter 929. Whereas the provisions of the 1985 Session Law, Chapter 929, the City of Conover and the City of Hickory by joint resolutions levied a room occupancy tourism tax. Whereas the City of Hickory and the City of Conover authorized the acquisition and improvement of the Hickory Metro Convention Center in 1998. And the occupancy tax proceeds were used to make lease payments, which in turn provided for the payment of the original construction and improvement of the convention center. Whereas in 2004, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Cataba, the City Council of the City of Hickory and the City Council of the City of Conover adopted joint resolutions approving Hickory's expansion and improvement of the Hickory Metro Convention Center and amending the lease to Hickory-Conover Tourism Development Authority. To provide for the expansion of the convention center, provide for the co-location of the Cataba County Economic Development Corporation with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to coordinate with nearby facilities, including the higher metro education centers, the Cataba County Chamber of Commerce, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and various other client services such as hotels, motels, and dining. And whereas the Hickory Metro Convention Center has served as a focal point for the western North Carolina business and industry and has been suggested by Forsyth Future Forward, Priority One, and other regional studies and plans. Whereas the Hickory-Conover Tourism Development Authority and the operations of the convention center have been a key economic engine, providing an economic benefit to the entire Cataba Valley for more than 16 years since the facility first opened. Revenue generated from events held at the convention center in fiscal year 2013-14 amounted to $6.9 million with 86,233 tourists attending events at the facility. Whereas the Hickory-Conover Tourism Development Authority is greatly appreciative for the efforts of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Hickory in providing their support in many ways, including but not limited to, an annual contribution to the ongoing efforts of the Hickory-Conover Tourism Development Authority staff to promote tourism in the Cataba Valley region. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Hickory-Conover Tourism Development Authority does hereby recognize and commend the City of Hickory for its continued efforts to confirm the mission and goal of the Hickory-Conover Tourism Development Authority to promote travel and tourism in the area and to recognize that the convention center is truly an economic engine and its efforts are far-reaching in both during a sound and stable economy. And this was signed July the 15th by Chair Eckert. And again, thank you for your support. This is almost a lesson in history, isn't it? That takes you way back. So we appreciate your ongoing support and look forward to many more years.
Well, didn't it go back 29 years? Was the act in 1985?
That's right, 1985. So I will get back to it.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Thank you, Mr. Eckert.
Bruce is back on one around in those days.
Thank you.
Well, as far as on this table here, I didn't explain myself, I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Eckert knew most of those guys on their wall back there. These councilmen from Conover can't get a break when they come in here. Okay, we have a representative of the Hickory Downtown Development Association for a discussion about Oktoberfest.
Well, 29 years is a nice segue for me to walk into because that happens to be, the 1985 was the magic year that Oktoberfest started in downtown Hickory. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and Manager Barry. My name is Tracy Nester. I'm the festival chair for Hickory Oktoberfest and I've served as chair since the year 2014, years. I've come to speak to you tonight on behalf of our sponsors and the general consensus of our Oktoberfest committee to request an extension of our operational hours that were approved with our special event permit. Hickory's Oktoberfest has been in operation since 1985. We are celebrating our 29th year. And the event has been closing between 11:00 and 11:30 for at least the 16 years that I've been a part of the festival. I provide a fact sheet for each one of you to review that shows some interesting facts about Oktoberfest and the overall impact to our community. Also have data for the calls of service for the year 2013 from the police department. This event has been recognized nationally as the number 10 Oktoberfest celebration in the USA by FundTober.com. Oktoberfest would not happen if it were not for the support of our sponsors and the services provided by the City of Hickory. Public safety has always been paramount and priority for the Hickory Oktoberfest Committee. I have personally attended workshops specifically addressing tactics to keep festivals safe that have been sponsored by the North Carolina Festivals and Entertainment. Some of these strategies that have been recommended were to make sure that your event staff and security is easily identifiable and visible. Have a communication strategy to maximize response time and minimize calls for service. Utilize bike patrols because they can respond quickly to crowd density. Have an emergency response and evacuation plan to make sure it's communicated to your security and event staff to make sure, should something actually happen. Also have security elevated during the event so that they can see the movement of the crowd and anticipate any potential confrontations. In addition to attending these workshops, I've also met with the Hickory Police Department annually to discuss issues that face Oktoberfest. Oktoberfest has complied with every single request made by the police department. We have doubled the amount of officers and the amount that we spend on security since 2006. We have met with the police department in February and were notified that our hours would be reduced to 10:00 PM. When I asked why, the reason was cited was public safety. We originally, during that meeting, we requested a compromise and it was denied. So I accepted our fate and proceeded to plan the event with the reduction in hours. We had our first meeting with the Oktoberfest stakeholders in early August. This was the first time this year that everyone was at the table. All of our sponsors and the entire committee were notified of the change of hours. There was quite a bit of opposition from our volunteers and our sponsors. It was noted that the event would incur significant profit loss with the shutting down at 10:00 PM. I also feel that it may be more of a public safety risk to close it at 10 o'clock because if the event closes at 10 o'clock, people are going to tend to stay around downtown Hickory until 11:00 or 11:30. With it closing at 11:00, people tend to go home afterwards. But that extra hour to me is going to create a liability and that there's not going to be anywhere for them to go. And they may choose to get in trouble. Would like to respectfully request tonight at least some type of compromise. Oktoberfest is willing to shut down the entire event except for the food sales and the main stage area. We can shut everything down up top, the rides and everything at 10 o'clock and have no problem complying with that. But the patrons of Oktoberfest are expecting to come and spend time in downtown Hickory till 11:00 or 11:30. Thank you for your consideration. And should you have any other questions to support your decision, please contact me directly.
And thank you, councilmembers, Mayor Wright and Manager Barry. I'm Anna Price, I'm the President of the Hickory J.C.'s. We are part of the Oktoberfest Committee. Oktoberfest is one of the main fundraisers for our organization every year. It actually is our main fundraiser with Hickory Live closely following. And this year, the hours were also affected, also affected Hickory Alive, shutting down the sales at 9:30. And while we still have one more event to go, I can tell you that there has been a drastic difference in the funding that we've received over the, we only had two because we did have a rain out date. And this funding that we get from Oktoberfest and events like Hickory Live does go towards programming that we do in the community such as Easter egg hunt, corporate challenge, the holiday parade. And those things may be hard for us to do in the future without the funding that we get from the large events such as Oktoberfest. I also know, I'm part of the Innovate Cataba process. I'm trying very hard to be very involved in this community. And I keep hearing, you know, we want to make sure that we have the 21 to 40-year-olds staying in this community. And I really feel like events like this keep those people here. I know when I moved here 11 years ago as a 23-year-old, Oktoberfest was a big draw for me because it was something that I could go out, I could meet people that were my same age. And I can tell you, I'm 34 now, but I'm still part of that demographic that doesn't go out until 9 o'clock at night. You know, they may have kids that they need to get to a babysitter before they can go out. So cutting back those hours deletes some of those opportunities for people to get out, meet other people in the community, and to stay connected in the community as well. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I mean, I would just say, Mr. Lael, I'm talking, I mean, 48 calls for service for 98,000. It's not very many calls for service.
Very few of them have been at 9:30.
Most of them are teenagers and street preachers fighting.
I don't think it's a street preacher's fighting.
Well, it's a teenager's fighting and street preachers.
We did have a street preacher assaulted. Most of these happened before 9:30. And of course, I think the police and all of us are not happy with the number of kids who were dropped off down there and left for the police to babysit. We're not happy with that. So maybe, maybe there's another thing we need to look at.
Or a compromise possibly on hours.
When I look at it, I know we run the risk that something will happen the first year that we look at this and make a decision from this counter up here. But I don't see a compelling reason not to, not to do it the way we have in the past unless we want to revisit the idea of the kids coming and hanging around.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I agree with you, Mayor, by the way. And sort of my sense is, and I don't go to festivals anymore, certainly not at 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night, but I would, I would be very much surprised if other festivals don't generally stay open till about 11. That is, you know, at least 11. That's a pretty typical, not considered a, you know, a really late night activity. But I'm also a little sort of dubious and unilaterally making a decision without understanding what the, what the, what the reason from the police department. And so I don't know how we bring that forth and...
Well, I thought we'd try to get Mr. Burry to address it and if he needs to have someone else.
Or we could have, or we could get the two sides together and report back. Thanks, Councilman.
Yeah, whatever you'd like to do. I know Chief Atkins and I talked earlier today and he certainly is prepared to discuss in broad terms the issues that they've seen at the police department over the last several years and Oktoberfest. Or, you know, whatever council wants to do, if you all want to direct the two groups to reconvene and discuss.
Do we have enough time to allow the parties that have come to these conclusions to meet back and report back to us rather than us sit up here and try to debate it tonight? Is there enough time? Is there enough time? I guess my question is, do we have enough time or is time of the essence of this?
Well, I think time is of the essence. I know I, I had a conversation with Ms. Kincaid earlier just about, okay, how does this change your plans if council were to change the hours? And she assured me that they could adapt to, you know, whatever decision council made. I think you would, so you've got your first meeting in September. Certainly there could be discussions between now and then and you could make a deci- decision then. I think, I think, not to speak for you, Ms. Kincaid, but you, they'd be able to adapt to that.
Would that give enough time for printing, printing all the materials that they need?
I just take force to make a decision tonight based on limited information that we have. We don't have everybody's perspective.
Okay. So they'd prefer a decision tonight so they can move forward and we can certainly have the chief come up and at least give you an overview of the, the issues and the concerns because I don't think the call volumes accurately reflect what, what we're dealing with out there. A lot of the things we deal with never have a call, never get reported.
Mayor, members, council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. Just as Mr. Berry said, those calls are unfortunately called in by Connie Kincaid and...
I think they all just...
Yeah. And so that's, that's the ones that are logged in. Now, the officers deal constantly with, with issues throughout the night and they just deal with them. They don't call in that we just dealt with a fight and so the accuracy of the calls for service is not depicted correctly in your 17 calls for service or whatever that number is. Now, it is the calls that Lieutenant Hillbrand provided the Oktoberfest committee, but again, we're dealing with a lot more issues than just being calls coming into the comm center and then out to the officers working Oktoberfest. The Oktoberfest event is, is an evolving event. It, as, as all of you know, during the Friday afternoons, you see a lot of patrons, a lot of folks coming from the downtown area into the festival area, probably purchasing food, doing some things, but looking around at crafts. And then it kind of evolves into an event where there's rides and other things happening there where families are involved. Usually about the time it turns dark is when the whole thing adjusts on Friday and Saturday night. You see a lot more children, as the mayor said, that are either dropped off, walked, drive themselves. They're not age of 21 so they are not down in the area where they're serving alcohol. So they're up on the main concourse between Second Street and Main Avenue. Since the crafts and other things that are on the western side of the Union Square kind of closed down, that kind of condenses the footprint of the Oktoberfest area to right there in that, that central area. Either you're on Second Street and Main Avenue area where it's thick. I mean, you can hardly walk through there and bicycles may work, not there. Bicycles are not, you know, you can't get a bicycle through there. You can barely get a police officer through there. And then it's down in the, in the beverage area. Now, we have officers assigned to various areas in the event. The beverage area, an occasional subject will drink a little bit too much or getting a little rowdier or some, something will happen and the officers will deal with that. We deal with more issues with the teenagers in downtown on that Second Street, Main Avenue than most of, of down in the, in the area of the Beer Garden. So closing down the food service, closing down the rides, it's not gonna do me any good. It's, it's not going to make those children go away. They're just gonna go someplace else. They're just gonna stay downtown because we can't make them leave. I mean, we can't say, okay, everything else is, the beer garden is open, you can't go in there but you gotta go home. Now, it takes about an hour, 45 minutes to the hour after the event closes for us to clear off all Union Square. We do have resources come in later at night to, to protect the area and, and watch the crafts and, and look for stragglers and those type of things. But we, we end up providing about 160 resource hours to the event and it's all hands on deck. I mean, we're, we're providing a shift, yell our homecomings that weekend, so we're dealing with that. This, this year, hopefully, thankfully, Hickory High's away so we don't have the Hickory High ball game to actually work. And we gotta have a lot, a lot of other off-duty commitments that we deal with during that. That's, so all hands are on deck. So we're dealing with that. So as a public safety issue, we thought that, okay, when the event starts to change in dynamics with the, with the children and when we have to deal with the, the folks more, that closing down at 10 o'clock would be a public safety initiative and hopefully reduce that disorder. So that's, that's why with the 10 o'clock, we used it for the Hickory Live so far. I, I haven't heard any issues about the 10 o'clock except the profits. The disorder, I think that we've been able to handle, even though we've only had two, we had one rain out, we have one more to go. So that's sort of why we're proposing a 10 o'clock is, is basically for public safety and reduce the disorder.
So have you seen a reduction in the trouble or which officers face with the Hickory Live having the reduction in...
Yeah, I, I can't, I, I don't think that we've had, I've not been told that we've had any, any issues. Again, we're trying to, an hour after the event, still trying to get people off Union Square that, you know, that are not going to bars, are not going to restaurants, they're just hanging out. So, you know, we still have to provide those resources downtown until that event kind of, or they, the crowd kind of lessens over the time. Again, we're, we're just trying, this is all about what we feel is best for public safety. We're not trying to, to, to knock an event down or anything or ruin profits. It's all about what we believe is, is, is going to be helpful in the public safety arena.
I really appreciate that, I mean, that perspective. I mean, if, if indeed the issue is the teenagers and minors that are not within the Beer Garden, really it's a, we're, we're trying to address maybe a larger issue of poor parenting perhaps by, by, you know, by, I, I don't say being punitive to the Beer Garden, but certainly restricting their, restricting their opportunity to, to do what they do and to encourage that kind of, you know, that, that age group from congregating.
Unfortunately, we see this at every local Hickory, or excuse me, every local football game. People will have their, you know, they'll be there for the football game and then the children will be someplace else playing and promising and stuff. I mean, we're, we're, we're providing a service for many parents.
Right.
Which we, we can't guarantee their safety because they're, you know, there are 16 officers at one time downtown during the, the peak hours and then there's a lot of Union Square, Trade Alley all the way over to the area of where the Beer Garden's at, the main, the main event. And we've talked to, and, and this year I sat down in February, like Tracy said, we talked about several issues. I've asked Connie to get back together with Tracy and talk about some of those concerns that she brought up and how we're going to address those. So I, I mean, I, I think we're, we're on, on the same page that we both want public safety. It's, it's all about making sure that event's safe. But again, we've got a little bit disagreement on what the time of closing.
I think the argument is there's nowhere else to go. There's plenty of places after hours downtown. If they wanna shift the drinking to a bar, there's certainly other places to drink in Hickory downtown.
Charlotte had some well-publicized problems. Was that, was it Speed Week? What was it the...
That had a number of them from First Night.
But they had a couple of deaths, right? Didn't they, or a couple of shootings?
Shootings, yeah.
And they, I think they actually, they, they get a curfew, didn't they? But it might've been a broad curfew on everyone. I, I, it really, unless you've driven around downtown at 10:30 on one of these nights, you wouldn't believe, you wouldn't believe the potential for danger. I mean, you see, you see some 11-year-olds out there hanging around with some 17-year-olds and stuff like that. It is not a good scene. But I, but I, but I don't think that has anything to do with the Beer Garden, with the...
And I agree with you, except that you can't shut one down and expect the, the other ones to, to leave. That, that's my, that's my dilemma. If it was just stay in the Beer Garden, I can confine everything to the Beer Garden, I could handle it. But I'm not, I'm not willing to put my 11-year-olds, my, my 15-year-olds or whatever in the Beer Garden to confine it to that area. So it's very difficult to control one area and, and say, this is closed, but, but this one still stays open. That, that's, that's our dilemma.
Can the association do more as I see what they've done as far as the group of security and stuff? Could they double that to take care of or be willing to do that? If, if that's where the, the problem lies?
We're sta- we're standing from here to you and something breaks out. I mean, it's, I mean, a police presence is important, but, you know, it's a number of, of people there and a number of issues that are going on that, that, you know, it's just, it's just a very confined space.
And they do bleed into other areas like the parking deck. We, I was with chief, my wife and I went down there last year, I think. We were, I was amazed at the 11 and 12-year-olds there. And, and they get moved, you know, a block away, but, you know, I mean, I wonder whether an hour and a half is, is, I mean, I wouldn't wanna kill Oktoberfest because I'm afraid the, the hours may have caused the, may have caused the demise of Hickory Live. But, you know, we're all about public safety too, so I...
And, and Oktoberfest, over the years, the, the staff has worked very, very hard to try to find those difficult solutions. Okay, I mean, we put a stage down here, trying to, trying different open mic type things. So, I mean, you know, they have tried to, to wrestle with this solution. It's just, it's hard to say you have to be here, you have to be there when it's still open downtown.
And, and, you know, and I don't wanna make light of it, but in a sense it is a, a good problem. I mean, like you mentioned, the getting spread thin last year with LR homecoming, Hickory High football game, Oktoberfest. I mean, these are all good things happening in the community and we, we're glad that we have them. And that's the, that's the, that's the point about Oktoberfest. It's a, it's a problem of having too many people, not, not a problem of having not enough.
Well, it's also a problem of having, uh, uh, age differentials that are not appropriate.
Yeah, yeah. Would it, would it be possible for council to adopt a, um, special ordinance that would deal with clearing the area behind the Beer Garden?
What about an ordinance with age specific for during that time?
But the, the problem is how, how do you enforce and...
If we have 16 police officers downtown and we have 211-year-olds, it's going to be very difficult for us to police that.
To, to, to force, right, right.
I mean, it, it, we just can't corral them and wait for the parents to come. It's one of those difficult. And we, you know, we've talked over the, the curfew, but unfortunately, the curfew type things is, is where you have to, a lower age to protect the youth from, from the elements out, out in the public, but those are from 11:00 PM on down, so, or, excuse me, 11:00 and after. So this would not be a solution for a curfew because...
Well, curfews can be 9:00 if you want it to be.
I will defer to our legal team on that.
I mean, you can set a curfew, but you have to have a good reason to do it and I'm not sure just, just carving out a time for Oktoberfest would be appropriate. I'm, I'm sure we could do it between now and, and this coming Oktoberfest.
Well, right now we're cutting back the hour and hour and a half right from 11:00.
Well, I think it was 11:00.
It's an hour from 11:00 to 10:00.
11:00 to 10:00.
We were, our original hours have always been beverage sales end at 11:00 and the event's over at 11:30. And, and it now it's changed to 9:30, sales end and then it's over at 10:00.
Trying to follow that a half an hour before the event closes.
Well, you know, I, I don't know that we've ever had a parental education program about, about not bringing, not allowing their children to hang around downtown at those late hours. I know every year about this time, whenever I'm speaking to a group or something, I always throw it out there. I say, "Parents, you ought to be ashamed if you're letting your kids be there with you and you don't even know it." Or even worse, if you're just dropping the moth there and say, "Let me know when you're ready to come home." It's absurd.
And for Chief Atkins, we don't have a problem on Friday night and that's because all of them are at the football games. It's Saturday night that, that we have the problem with the teenagers. But again, it's not in the Beer Garden area. I, I wanted to clarify that. It's not in the Beer Garden area at all.
What about if we could provide an alternate location for them to go do something else?
I mean, during this time.
I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, if we had an alternate, an alternate location for that age group during that specific time designated to do something and go somewhere else that was maybe controlled by them or could be controlled.
I think that's a great idea, but I don't know what it would be. There are lots of other things that they could be doing.
So that's like...
Many, many other...
Something promoted particularly for that period, something that would, that would attract them.
And there's an element of those kids who, who really are looking for something just a little edgy, just to get them a...
I mean, I don't know what else it would take and that, and that would certainly have to have some resources also.
And it's, it's a pretty good idea. I mean, in terms of, we, we couldn't program it right now and certainly couldn't implement it this year, but maybe moving forward, we could ask the DDA or the J.C.'s to, to think about that.
Something else at another location that's contained.
At least as a test.
That would be, something that would be desirable for them.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what that's...
Because I don't, I, quite frankly, I don't know why that's desirable. I mean, all they do is go up there and walk around.
Yeah.
Main thing is just to hang out.
Yeah, but if they had a specific location other than that, that we could monitor perhaps, I mean, take it somewhere else, maybe the Crawdad Stadium, I don't know.
Could we compromise on the hours instead of saying shut it down at 11:00 or instead of 9:30, say 10:30 and the whole thing's over at 11:00? Just shift it and see if it makes a difference and have DDA and them work next year to have an alternative for what we see as the teenage problem.
And, and could we try it this next time just to see if, if, if we have any major problems? Because I don't believe we've had major problems with this.
You're, you're always playing Russian roulette.
Yeah, I mean, you know, worst case scenario is something terrible happens. It only takes one incident, one incident, and then we're all saying, well, we should've done something differently.
For public safety.
That's all, that's all it's gonna take is one incident.
And we don't know that, 9:30 or 10:30.
Right, of course, but it, you know, it's, it's just not...
And I, I would agree, Ms. Patton, that we maybe we ought to try it for this year and then see what happens.
So try a compromise, 10:30, is that what you're saying?
Shut the beer sales down at 10:30 and hope the event over 11:00. And if that works well, and then charge the DDA and them to, because you're really talking, if the whole event is what, three days, three and a half days, you're talking an hour. That's not that much revenue for one hour out of...
I'm not really concerned about profitability.
I'm not worried about the revenue.
We're, we're more about public safety.
The safety piece of it's really bothering, especially what we've seen in the past with the Hickory Live and the, and the situations we had. Again, with the teenagers just hanging around and people from outside the community coming in and creating so much of the problems with the public drunkenness and bad behaviors.
It's a, it's a great example of, of how tough governing can be. I mean, clearly the safest thing to do would be to not have Oktoberfest at all, but we don't want that. So we have to, we have to gauge between public safety...
Let's don't have high school, let's don't have high school football.
Right, we have to gauge between public safety and, you know, there's...
Let's go all along.
No problems, let's eliminate all problems. Right, right. So I, I, I think it's, I think that's a good idea.
We spend a lot of time talking about keeping people in this age group in Hickory. And here's some coming to ask for something to keep them here that they want. Let's remind you of that.
Well, and it's difficult, you know, I, I think we've, we've got two issues really. We've got the quality of the experience for the people who participate and we've got the public safety issue. And I think we've, we've taken that chance in the past. I don't see any need not to, I'm not sure the half hour makes much difference. These kids are gonna be, they're gonna be milling around till they decide to go home anyway. But I, I could listen to a compromise. I'm, I'm listening to a motion, whatever we get.
Motion to move it to, um, shut the beer sales down at 9:00, excuse me, 10:30 and the event down at 11:00.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to second.
And that's just for this coming Oktoberfest?
Yeah, annually they approve the application for Oktoberfest, so that would be the application for this year.
Any further discussion?
That changes it by a half hour.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's you down.
And I... And I do hope the DDA will, in fact, work very hard to find an alternate for the teenage problem that is consistent.
Yeah, I think that would be key in this, if we could figure out what that is.
I personally wouldn't want that responsibility.
And we've met with the police department, and, and again, to talk about the teenagers. One of the things that we tried implementing was adding a teen stage. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem to have, the congestion is on Second Avenue, right, right there where the synergy of everything is. So, you know, we're, we're still open to, to any ideas, anything that we can implement. Because again, like I said, public safety is paramount to us. We're, because one, one bad thing to go wrong and it's over for good. So, and thank you. We're very happy with the compromise.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Ian Frye, Tru-250 St. Luke's United Methodist Church. He's here working on his communications badge. Good to have you and your mom Barbara. Motion to approve the minutes of August 10.
Person's requesting to be heard.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye. That's unanimous. All members are present.
Mr. Mayor, person's requesting to be heard.
Do we have persons requesting to be heard?
No.
Anyone wish to be heard? I had to check that green sheet, so I didn't think we had anyone. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lael, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Consent agenda, anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Who could be approved?
Motion by Misner?
Second.
Second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Man, that covered a lot of pages there. Are we down to the public hearing?
Yes, sir. The public hearing this evening, I'll ask the city's principal planner, Mr. Cal Overby, to come and present a contiguous annexation, actually, of Star Town Road right-of-way. Mr. Overby?
Thank you, Ms. Barry, Mayor Ryan, and Councilman Mr. Crown. I have before you a petition by the City of Hickory to annex a portion of the Star Town Road right-of-way. Again, I protect the City of Hickory. The property is located between 23rd Street Drive Southeast and Gilstar Drive. It's about six tenths of an acre of property. It's closest to Ward III. Again, it's a public street, and in future, it's be a public street. The annexation is being requested to basically clean up a gap in some existing corporate boundaries of the city here. Area in question is shown in red. What this does not show, and I could not get it to show with the scale of the map that I was trying to produce, is there's actually a sliver of property that runs from about right here to about right here. That's about anywhere from two foot to a foot and a half wide. It was found as a gap. The reason we found it was when the Krispy Kreme here was being annexed to the city, the surveyor that was in the annexation contacted our city surveyor to find a distance and bearing tie for the Star Town Road area to tie to the right-of-way, because they were going to annex this area also. But then we discovered this area here. Basically, what happened was that we're looking at several decades-old surveying techniques versus modern survey techniques. So, it gets, the accuracy got a little bit better here and there. And so, we told the surveyor that we would clean this up administratively through our staff to fill in this gap and to also grab the right-of-way in front of Star Town Road, the Krispy Kreme, which basically shores up some of the city boundaries. That's kind of how we got to this point from where we began, really. Again, you can see, this property currently is, this is the Krispy Kreme that was just opened. This is where Tyco Credit is at, a service station here, some residences, and again, it's community college. And again, this area being shown as the annexation area. It's all zoned commercial in the area. The city doesn't zone the right-of-ways. There's not really a reason to have a zoning designation on a public right-of-way. So, you can see, basically, we're looking at a huge commercial area in southeast Hickory. With that, I'll close and state our findings and recommendations. We find that the annexation meets all applicable state standards for annexations. All public services are required to serve the property, and the annexation will not cause any city services to fall below acceptable levels. With that, I will close and say that staff does recommend approval of annexation, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Overby. I'm going to, I'm going to skip all of the waterplate here. I'm going to declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And as for motion or discussion?
I'm in approval that we modernize the map.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next new item is a departmental report, and I'll ask Assistant City Manager Ms. Andrea Surratt to come to the podium and discuss with council your vacant building and demolition grant program. It's such a popular program that funds have been exhausted. And as we have looked at that as staff, we felt like maybe some tweaks would be in order to help spread the funding a little bit farther along, and I'll ask Ms. Surratt to present that to council.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to just accue you to the page 304 of your agenda, if you want to go to the guidelines and specifically the strikeout, underlined version of the grant guidelines, if you want to have access to that. And also, at your place, I gave you a spreadsheet that also goes along with, it has green, that's a detailed listing of all the grants, and that information's available through the city as well, if you have questions. But we might refer to that tonight as well. So, I would like to start just by giving you a brief update about the grant program. It has been in effect for almost seven years now. And so, with that program, we've had a number of evolutions of the grant. And the grant includes a way to not only renovate buildings, but also to demolish buildings. Most recently, our grant guidelines were amended in 2011, and so, we saw our first grant approval for, under the new guidelines, in early 2012 with the Holler Hosery project. So, I'd like to talk about the grant program since 2012. And so, the, there have been 10 grants approved in that time. There have been six renovations and four demolition projects. And the grant tonight, the program request is also to talk about funding. So, two things related to funding. One is to fund some projects that need to be finalized, and those happen beyond a fiscal year where the funds were originally allocated. Those grant funds do not roll over unless city council establishes that as policy for part of the budget process. And then, secondly, to think about, in this current fiscal year, if there are potential projects that you would want to fund, having some funds available for that. But let's start just by going through just some basics on the background of this grant program in the last several years. It's generated 30 million in new investment just in the major mill buildings alone in the revitalization area. And we have four projects there that have, that make up that investment. It has, this has been an active year specifically in the last, say, 18 months or so, and you've seen all that activity as we've come to the podium and talked about Lyerly Mill, Maretz Mill, Holler Mill, Piedmont Wagon, and Simmons Hosery, and a number of others, as well as some major demolitions. So, it's been active. We sort of, maybe that's a sign of coming out of the recession. Maybe that's a sign of just interest in that area to redevelop. But once you had that, I'd say, the groundbreaking project of Holler Hosery, that spurred other development. That's what we like to see in a particular blighted area. So, we feel very good about that. We feel like the program's doing what it needs to do. Every year, you consider $100,000 in your budget for this grant program. And we're giving out grants potentially of 20,000 up to 30,000. And so, those funds are, are not necessarily spent in the same fiscal year. If you can imagine that a project gets started, they can only access half of the funds at the beginning of the project if they show a, an end user, and then they access the last half of the funds once the project's completed. And most of the time, the projects are spanning more than one fiscal year. So, an improvement in the grant program is to, is to see if that, those funds could roll over. This is the first year we've had a situation where there are more, more grant funds awarded than we had funds in the, in the line item due to those rollovers, because the money didn't keep rolling over. In years past, money's gone back into the general fund, and even though there might have been an active project, it still went back into the general fund. We didn't add it back in. We just had 1,000, 100,000 in the budget. So, we can come back to that if you've got questions about that part. This is a map of the urban revitalization area. So, I'd like to call out that the 10 projects here are listed on the right. So, Holler Hosery, of course, Maretz, and Lyerly. Then again, we have some in the northwest part of Hickory. Agile Specialty was a demolition, and then Piedmont Wagon was a renovation. We had, looking back, we had Regency Motel as a big demolition. Walton Knitting Mill was, is one that's not active right now, and it was a demolition scheduled. And then, AA Schufert, of course, is coming down as we, as we speak. And then, there are two projects with the asterisks beside, or at least I should have flagged the other one. It jumped off the page. Simmons and Holbrook Landscaping. Simmons being here, as you travel past LR up toward Hickory High. Simmons Hosery, and then Holbrook Landscaping out Highland Avenue. Those are both projects that were brownfield sites that are outside the area but qualified due to suspect brownfield properties. So, those are two that, that aren't in the blue area but, but qualified for the grant. So, we have those 10 projects, and they're in various stages of either completion or final, final construction or demolition and yet have, have yet to be closed out. So, I'd like to go quickly now through the changes to the grant that staff is proposing, just mostly just cleanup, but just a few things that maybe make the grant more efficient. One is just being sure that we are stewards of the grant to say that, you know, we really are just trying to do one grant per property, being clear about that in the guidelines. And then, clarifying that, that grants or properties are not eligible for both a vacant building grant and a demolition grant. Of course, you can decide if this is what you want to do. These are recommendations from staff. But we have had some requests where they go, well, I'm going to tear down this portion of the building, but keep this. So, could I have one grant of each? And we just, at this point, feel like the funds should be more widely dispersed. The funds are available per fiscal year, and then, once we've encumbered those funds, that we, you know, if we are out, we are out for the year, and being more clear about that with the applicants as they come through the process. Talking about, clarifying that the BDC can review the grants, but if that funding has run out, you know, if we just have a number of applications come through, we just aren't going to take those all the way to council unless you change the amount of the funding. And we aren't asking to do that except for just one time. Then, we'd like to potentially modify the dollar amounts that go to each grant, dropping the 30,000 to 20 for renovations and the 20,000 to 15 for demolitions. And the reason for that is twofold. One is, is that we feel that, that we are through a major hump of our large projects. We have a number left, but we feel like we've done a great job with the bigger projects that have come through. And so, a slightly smaller dollar amount would just go further. We have a number of smaller buildings that might not even qualify for the highest amount, and so, we might be able to do a few more grants that way. So, just making that change. Again, that's up to council. We have to be sure that applicants understand they cannot be in code enforcement action and then come and get the grant. That's sort of, just not right. So, with that, you know, code enforcement, HPD code enforcement has done a number of demolitions that aren't even listed here. They've done a tremendous amount, residential and commercial. So, you know, this project, this grant program is just supplemental to their efforts every day in the field. So, we are thankful for all the work that they do and how they clean things up. So, but we can't have projects in code enforcement. They can't go around the rules. We also want to be sure that projects don't fall into code enforcement. So, the project can't be so far gone that it's just another avenue to access funds to avoid a safe building. And so, we want to be sure people understand that. And then, the last piece is just that, you know, this is a contract that the city council makes with the applicant. It's binding, it's legal, and we don't feel that the work should start before you all decide to appropriate a grant, if they're going through the grant process. So, if you have applicants that come through and have mostly finished the work, or then, you know, then they've already assumed that responsibility to do the project fully themselves. Those are clarifications to the guidelines that we would suggest be made. And so, finally, on the funding, just in looking at the projects that we have outstanding, they're about, it's about $40,000 beyond what the current fiscal year has. So, in other words, the projects that have, have rolled, excuse me, the projects that have rolled over did not have funds that rolled over with it. So, we've got 40,000 sort of in a, in an amount, in a deficit in that line item. And then, looking ahead, if you wanted to continue the grant program, we anticipate a number of applications in the next eight months or so through the remaining fiscal year, 10 months. And so, potentially, just another 40,000 just to carry us through for some highly qualified candidates that might come through with really good projects, whether that's demolition or renovation. So, those are the two requests on the funding, and then, the changes in the grant guidelines are what we're proposing tonight. I'm happy to try to answer questions.
Can you roll back to the, to the slide right there?
To the map? No, sir. That one? Maybe one more?
Okay. Funds are available per fiscal year. Once funds have been encumbered, it's temporarily suspended. At the present time, all funds are encumbered, right?
That's correct.
Including this year's?
Including this fiscal year, right.
You're asking that we encumber some more funds?
40,000 additional.
Now, go back to.
Yeah, certainly.
I want to make sure I understood exactly.
Okay. So, in order to pay out the remaining of the 10 projects on the list, in order to close out the outstanding grant programs, the grant projects, in order to close those out, we are 40,000 short to do that in this fiscal year, having gone, there, if you think about that there, we did Maretz and Holler. I could rattle them off again. You know, if it's $100,000 and you've, you've done Transportation Insight, Piedmont Wagon, Holbrook Landscaping, Maretz Mill, there's, there's 120,000 right there. Those are 30,000 each. Then, there are demolitions at 20 apiece. So, it just, it adds up faster. And a number of these, remember, possibly are with an economic development project. So, it was part of an ED agreement, and they were, you know, that, that was just one of the pieces of the puzzle that made that ED agreement successful. So, we had, you know, just a number of big projects that came through the pipeline this year.
So, we already have approved 250, and we've paid 80. So, there's 170 that's been approved but not paid.
170.
Is that right?
No, there's 40. We need 40 to pay out the ones that have been approved.
Well, we've got some, some to be paid out over here in 2016 fiscal year. Right? Am I wrong?
No, no, sir. Not unless they, not unless they, I mean, part of the issue with this grant is that our timetables for construction are beyond, are beyond the fiscal calendar year. So, we don't really know when we pay out the final final, because they, it's on their own timetable.
So, part of it is we should not have the money go back to the general fund?
Right, and we just never, yes, ma'am. And we just never, yes, ma'am, we did not really think that through well enough in the early stages because we were new at it, and that's just something we want to clean up.
Is part of this proposal to include rolling over funds each year?
No. No, I think what we need to do, I mean, I was interested that the mayor used the term "encumbered" because that's an accounting term. And if the funds truly were encumbered, they would roll over in the fiscal year. But that, in our system, that means a PO has to be issued. Well, we're not issuing a PO. It's a grant program. So as Ms. Surratt has said, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, you might have a 60 or 70,000 dollar balance in that account. You may have committed that 60 or 70,000, but per the accounting standards, it goes to the, it falls out, goes away, becomes part of fund balance, start over the next year. And that's exactly why we're in this situation of saying we need 40,000 to pay for all of the projects that have already been committed to, and we feel like we'll need another 40,000 to fund, you know, more grant opportunities in the current fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
I don't see how we could not go ahead and fund the ones that we've obligated to, the 40,000. That, I mean, from what you're saying, from what I'm understanding, we've already obligated.
We agree.
Yes. I mean, how we can go back and not fund those, that's my?
And I think it's been so successful, I would like to see more, I mean, how much more do you have in the hopper? You say there's some very good projects that are coming.
Right.
I don't want to put the brakes on something that has been so successful in working in conjunction with also the code enforcement, sort of a two-pronged thing that the city has done, and it has really made a difference in many areas of town.
Well, it's creating jobs for these, for these buildings that were possibly vacant before.
That's very true, and it's bringing back neighborhoods.
It's bringing back neighborhoods. I mean, it's a win-win situation, and I think.
It does, yeah. I can mean to, go ahead.
No, no, I was through at the win-win.
I'm a little bit perplexed. Are we solving the real problem? Because we can certainly make up on the ones that we've approved, but even going forward with the policy, come, beginning of fiscal year 15, a bunch of them come through, we approve them, they don't want to pay out until 16, and all of a sudden, we've got a deficit because we've approved some in 16 that might have paid out. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, you're right. We'll have to continually come forward to council if it continues to be this popular and ask for budget adjustments from time to time.
From time to time.
You're correct.
Okay.
The accounting piece of it is not resolved.
Well, what is happening, Brad, Mr. Lell, according to what you were saying, is we have people who are saying that they are making decisions based on anticipation that we will, that they will qualify for these grants, and then they find it's not budgeted.
Well, it was.
That's the kind of thing, we understand that not budgeted, but that's the kind of thing that drives business owners crazy.
Well, I don't know that.
It's a matter of the day that you get your request in.
I don't know that we've run into that situation exactly that way, Mr. Mayor, that we haven't turned any down, any grant applications because funds have not been available, to your point, so.
Now, I'm hearing from one that I thought that's what the person was saying, that he had been told that no money was available.
Well, that's, I mean, yeah, you see, you see the request before you right now to say, we're hearing that there are going to be more coming, and if you're going to fund those, then you need to appropriate the money.
But what I'm concerned about is, I want to have something, I don't know whether we run an ad in the newspaper on public notice or what, but the business owners need to understand that there's no guarantee on that, that there's not money set aside, and we absolutely are committed to this program for every application, unless we are. And if we are, then we say, well, for internal management purposes, we're going to do this annual budget, but we know, we're going to approve every one of these. I can live with, I can live with several of those options. But I do have the problem with, what if we have four people come forward and said, I had my deal in the works, and I needed that 40,000, that 20,000 to make my project work, or I wouldn't have closed on it. Sometimes that might be true, sometimes it might not be. But I do think one of the things that this has resulted in is I think we motivate, we motivate people to make decisions and act on them because we're giving them a little money.
That's one thing I was just sitting here thinking about, you know, how often is this a deal maker or a deal breaker? Would they do that anyway, without any?
It's, you know, that's a great question. It's just like the, any economic development incentive for any local government or state government, who knows? Who knows what they have come if you hadn't done it? Who knows? I mean, there's, all you know is that the neighbors are doing it, so you're trying to do it too to make sure you're competing. That's the big question.
There's two issues. How many people are really, it really is a game changer, and how many are okay, it's a game changer?
What we need is a good answer to that question.
Well, but I think what you have instead is you have a program so that you say, look, well, here's the rules, here's how this works, you know, and here, and it's clear to everybody, as the mayor said, there's a level playing field, and, you know, I think that's how local governments typically try to deal with these things, is because it is very, it's impossible to have a crystal ball and say, would this have happened with or without it?
Well, the suggestion that the grant be approved before work commences is a good one. That would probably flesh out a bunch.
Yeah, and you're actually going to get one coming that we have a problem with as staff because, you know, the work commenced and they're going along, and all of a sudden they say, oh, wait a second, we want to go get this grant from the city. And we said, well, that's not the guidelines, so.
If you are, that's a game changer.
They've all been pretty smooth sailing to this point, but they may not be going forward.
I think, I have to just look at the amount of investment that's happened from, and maybe it would have already, it would have happened anyway, but it's our fate that we are promoting the reinvestment and that we are buying into it also. And I think that says, speaks well of the city, that we believe in what they're doing and we're willing to put some skin into it.
Well, I would move approval of the change to the vacant building and demolition grant policy.
Motion by Lell, second by Meisner. Any further discussion?
I have one question. It sounds as though if we agree with this, then if there's no money that's available, then nothing else is even going to rise past the business development committee.
That's correct. That's the policy.
Well, we've got 40,000 that can go before them, right?
No, we're asking for 40,000 to take care of your existing commitments, and then we anticipate 40,000 going forward for the next eight months.
Those will go before the business development.
Yep, and then they'll come to you. I mean, they come through staff, EDC.
Clarify for me what your point was, please.
Was it once that's out, nothing else will go?
Well, we all know, we're going to be contacted. And then you have to, and it gets difficult, but it happens in this business we have sitting at this table. Sometimes you say, you know, people say, well, you're picking winners and losers, and we don't like to look at it that way. But sometimes that does happen.
And it may be something we just need to consider from year to year, too.
I guess what I'm seeing is, I have not heard anything that would say to me that if someone was undertaking a project and convinced us it was worthwhile, that we wouldn't bring it before council and see if we'd get approval on it.
Well, if they fill in the application and all of the lines are correct, then certainly they should be considered very seriously.
Just like any other economic development.
Okay, we've got a motion.
The motion includes the 40,000.
I was going to do that by separate motion.
Yeah.
I think that includes just.
Yeah, this is just for food and policy.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Second motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and encumber the 40,000 for the obligations we already have. Is that okay?
I would rephrase that to say appropriate fund balance, 40,000 to put in a line item to handle your existing commitments.
But that's not obligations we already have, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
That we anticipate being paid out this fiscal year.
The first 40,000, how's that going to be paid?
That is the first 40,000.
Then what's the second 40?
Second 40 is what we anticipate needing for the next eight months.
So that's going to be another motion?
That's right.
And then Jack Sykes is going to be a third one.
Right, we asked for 80,000, we recommended 80,000 to handle.
I was trying, I was trying to count to three there. I was trying to figure out.
But the main thing we need to do is go ahead and fund what we've approved.
Well, we, we, we got that, didn't we? One, two.
That's the motion that's before us right now.
And I've made, I'll second that.
That's the motion that we got right now.
Okay. Motion by Gess, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion's carried.
The next motion would be to consider allocating 40,000 for other projects that may occur in fiscal year 14, 15.
That'd be another 40,000, right?
Are those funds going to roll over, or is that, is that part of it or not?
We have to be certain.
Been year to year, I'm sure.
This is an appropriation of fund balance.
Yes, sir.
So they won't.
We're not changing that.
Motion by Meisner, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Now, finally, Jack Sykes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Calling Mr. Dave Lee and A to come forward, and this is an interesting dynamic. You all discussed this at your last city council meeting, made a decision that you would grant Mr. Sykes' company or the company Jack Sykes, an exemption to your policy and pay out the second half of his grant, based upon information we had at the time that Lenore Ryan University was going to rent the space. And of course, that is one of the key qualifiers of the grant, is you can't just renovate space and then it stays empty. You've got to renovate space and get people in it. Shortly after you all took that action and before second reading tonight, we learned that the building was going to be vacant for the foreseeable future because Lenore Ryan's program has had some changes and they won't be moving into space in a timely manner. Dave, not to steal all your thunder, but so we felt it appropriate to bring it back to you all, make sure you knew that information like we knew that information, so that you could either reaffirm your decision of last meeting or change your decision with additional information that the building is going to be vacant for the time being. You want to add something to that, Dave?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, now he's going to tell you what really is going on.
Mayor, right. Members of council, Mr. Crowe. Yeah, back in July, I presented a lot of information to you guys about the Jack Sykes construction project. They had gotten approval back in December 2009 for their renovation of the building that they own at 844 Highland Avenue Southeast. Now, the guidelines on this one are completely different from what we're dealing with now when this was approved. They got half the money when they finished the exterior improvements to the building and half when the occupancy occurred. Now, we give all the, you have to have your end users outlined in the beginning, and since you have your end users outlined at the beginning, then you get all your money when the improvements are finished and the building is occupied. So there's only one payment now. So this situation that we have now will not be occurring in the future. So in July, we, you all instructed staff to basically draft up an amendment to the guidelines or to the agreement that would allow for payment of the amount owed, which is a little less than $10,000. So staff, Ms. Dooliffe, and myself worked up an amendment that would give Jack Sykes Construction 120 days to achieve occupancy of the building after that, after that would be approved. Once that was drafted and went to council, I just had a meeting, Bill Burton, the president of Jack Sykes Construction, came to my office and basically told us that the situation had changed, and they're not going to be able to occupy that building until July 2015 at the earliest due to some changes that Lenore Ryan University had with their administrative structure of the PA program that's planning on building or renovating that space, the interior of that space. So July 2015 would be roughly five and a half years after the original grant approval. And at this stage, given the funding of the, with the rest of the grant, it would be staff's recommendation to deny that, the request for the extension. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you all have.
You say when he originally took, got the grant, the other was, it was supposed to be paid out when it was occupied?
Correct. Yes, they, he got the grant in December 2009, originally had 180 days to finish the improvements, then got an extension for another 180, giving him a year. He finished the improvements in December 2010, received payment based on that first half of the grant amount, and then had until December 2011 to do the rest, and I hadn't, we haven't had occupancy of the building.
Is this building going to be on the campus? Is it on the campus?
No, it's across the street from Holler Hosery.
It's between Holler and?
It's a multi-tenant building.
But we could grant the money when he actually has it occupied?
Yes, you are.
Which would be in keeping with what he agreed to in the beginning, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's really just the deadline that he has had issue with meeting.
So staff recommends we deny the extension?
That's correct.
I'd make that motion.
I'd make that motion.
Second. The premise on which, Mr. Leonetti? Don't leave me standing here, sitting here. The premise on which we agreed to pay him was because there were conditions beyond his control that made it difficult for him to complete his work and to obtain tenants.
That's correct.
And that was progress that was being made on projects that we likewise had incentivized.
No, no, namely, the conditions was the widening of 8th Street. That's the, that was the, that's what happened that delayed occupancy.
With that and Lenore Ryan Boulevard traffic and?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
All of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
But he's saying that through no fault of his own, he was progressing with what he set out to do, and had told us he would do it. And through no fault of his own, he was unable to finish it and rent it on a timely basis. Is that not what he said, or what we agreed?
Yeah, generally. I think the question you all have to wrestle with is how long? You know, I mean, what we came back with was 120 days, and then that doesn't meet his criteria now to have a tenant in to meet the other half of his obligation.
But the tenant was going to be Lenore Ryan.
And it still is, but it's going to be 2015, and he can come back to us then and get balance.
Is that what you're saying? He can come back when Lenore Ryan moves in and say, now?
No, what we're recommending is that the second half of the payment be denied. That's what staff recommends.
The problem with this, I see, is if we do this once, I mean, what good does it do to have the rules in there if we're going to continue just to?
Of course, as Mr. Leonetti said, the rules are different now anyway. I mean, you remember, we've had three iterations of this program, and this was in one of the iterations that we don't operate under anymore.
Under the current rules, where would he stand?
Well, in the current rules, he would have gotten his payment. Well, no, he wouldn't have. He wouldn't have gotten any of the payment because he doesn't have a tenant yet.
He wouldn't have gotten to the end.
Right.
Under the current rules, that building actually wouldn't be eligible anymore.
He's benefited from it anyways.
You need to say that. Under the current rules?
Under the current rules, as a semi-occupied, multi-tenant building, that building would not be eligible under the guidelines.
Yeah, that's right. Because we had that time where it was like, well, is it occupied or not occupied? What percentage of it's occupied? Now the policy is it's got to be completely vacant. You can't have some of it occupied, some of it not.
But it now is vacant.
Yeah, I believe now it's completely vacant.
And it's not a multi-tenant?
The home medic.
It's not intended to be a multi-tenant building?
Pardon?
It's intended to be one tenant, Lenore Ryan, right?
Yes.
What is the owner? Is it Jack Sykes?
Jack Sykes.
Jack Sykes.
Dale Burton is the second one.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion from Mr. Meisner and a second from Mr. Seaver to deny the extension. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I'm voting no. Okay. Any nominations?
Yeah, I would like to nominate Charlie Hayes for Yeah, I would like to nominate Charlie Hayes for the Community Appearance Commission at Large.
Any others? I second that nomination. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Matter's not on the agenda? General comments?
I have, I just want to give the shout out to the police department for their win for the Safe Harbor Bed Race last Saturday. They actually beat out CrossFit, which I hate to say, I was surprised, but y'all did a great job. And the fire department was in there too. Everyone...
They got the best bed.
They got the best bed. It was a lot of fun, but thank you for the police department for winning that race.
Okay. I have one thing that I'd like to say. You know, it's rare that we have cakes and celebrations here. We recently had celebration of Mr. Burden's birthday.
40th birthday.
We celebrated the late one. It's been years last since was the last one. And we have that cake left. Well, tonight is his 10th anniversary with the city of Hickory, or it's close enough that we're celebrating.
It's this one.
Do we get another cake? That's what I'm thinking. I believe there's always cake left, though. No, not right here, I hear.
And I said I'm 40 now because we're looking for the city to make the younger drivers sometimes. That's why I...
Mr. Burden, thank you for your service and appreciation. And we appreciate all of the rest of us putting up with him and making him what he is.
I appreciate this.
I got one thing. I'd just like to remind everybody that this last Sunday was a dedication of a law review school located where the old Grandview School was. I went to school there, I'm sure you're too, but that is a moment that everybody was proud of. And we're looking to him to look forward to that. All Grandview School, everybody's proud.
And Hickory Construction and some local...
And we have the dedication today of the Zara Baker Treehouse.
Zara Baker Treehouse. And if you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. It is special and as it ages, weather, and as we walk along, it's sort of become more I make a motion we go to the closed session for approval for matters stated in the agenda plus four fires in discussion in the economic development. Second by Seaver, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We will adjourn because that will be a business that will come out of that thing.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. That's burning. That is now burning.
My energy has already got assaulted by a water... I understand. It's a song. They're covered down with a black thing. Give it, give some... Oh, hell. But we would say...